Okay, we're reconvening on the July 5th, 2017 work session in reference to the Personnel Manual. Mr. Kramer, if you -- sorry about the interruption, if you don't mind, I appreciate if you could continue.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, council members. I think we're ready to start Chapter 7 probationary period. This is rather straightforward, and I don't think there's any change in these, in this language.
Which page?
Page 29 for me. As I said, I don't think there's anything, I don't think there's anything new here at all.
Any questions from anybody in particular?
There are different probationary periods for different types of employee, and in every respect, a probationary period can be extended.
The only thing I had was on 707, which was the very last one under A, where it says, "Request that the Director of Human Resources extend it." I would say notify the Director of Human Resources of the extension, because it wouldn't be the Director of Human Resources' responsibility to grant a request, correct? If you're extending a probationary period? Or would that be the obligation, would that have to be maybe approved by the Director of Administration?
It's, if it's extended, it's normally at the, at the request of the department head, who's evaluated the depart, or the employee. So then the department head makes the, or actually informs the HR.
Right, notifies. Maybe instead of request.
Instead of request.
Notify.
They notify them to extend the period.
Yeah, notify them, okay, okay.
Yeah, they're not making a request of that position, they're just notifying them to extend the period.
And at that point in time, should that be from the Director of Human Resources? That should actually be notifying the, I would think, the Director of Administration, because the Director of Human Resources just simply...
I think it's that, you certainly can have it however you want, but in this, the way that it's written, it's only done because that position would then do the necessary paperwork to make that change.
I would say notify the Director of Administration that way. You, at least the Director of Administration can say, "Oh, you're extending, you're extending a probationary period?"
And then that person notifies the HR Director, because they have to know.
Right, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't know if there are other processes in place that might make certain of that, or, I don't know what the job description of the Director of Administration would be.
That has to be done, because there has to be a personal action notification generated.
Oh, got, okay.
And that's what, that's, that's the responsibility of HR Director. Thinking along the lines of communication with the Director of Administration about extending a probationary period, there might be a high probability that there would be conversations between the department head and the Director of Administration anyway.
Well, no doubt.
Yeah.
And that's in everything we do, but...
(laughing)
All right.
At any rate.
Chapter 8?
That's it.
Any questions on Chapter 7?
Okay. Chapter 8, work rules. Work rules covers a panoply of subjects here, I guess that's why it's called work rules. But there's almost everything, from soup to nuts, but it's all part of the work rules process.
The only question I had is, starting out with county vehicles, it talks about the operators, you know, they're, you know, not, they have to have permission to use a county vehicle or something to that effect. And there are other areas in here as well. My first question was, or else, what happens? And whether or not there should be something that states what happens? I know further down, there, there's a discussion as far as what the...
You mean if an unauthorized person drives a county vehicle?
See, in 822B6, it does talk about if there, there's, there's a, you could lose your job, or there's certain violations that could occur. But in a lot of these other categories, it doesn't really say what happens if you don't do it. And I didn't know if there was another all-encompassing document, or some, somewhere else in this manual that says, "Here's what happens." Because this just says you can't do it. Is there some general clause that says if you're in violation of any of these, that you're suspended, or you could be facing suspension?
Well, there could be, there could be the addition on page 33, at the end of 0805. 0805 covers driver operator substance impairment official business documentation, traffic violations, if you saw fit, and the need for it. You could add a subsection F to state that violation of provisions of this section make the employee subject to, may make the employee subject to...
Okay.
I'm trying to think of the, think of the word. Punishment's the wrong word, but...
Right. Well, it's further on, and...
Discipline, thank you.
It does state that specifically in...
Some places it does.
Yeah, yeah.
It is vague throughout.
And F, discipline? Okay.
And in regard to E, traffic violations, employees are first responsible for payment of traffic fines or parking fines. I think there should be something about if there are multiple traffic violations. I think there should be accountability there as well.
Well, that, that gets into the supervisor's responsibility for overseeing the employee.
But it, but nothing distinguishes that they can't have 20 traffic violations. I mean, sooner or later, someone's got to take the vehicle away from them.
Or how many DWIs? You see that? And just think what I understood it just said.
Well, my point is, while these regulations seem to be very specific, and in some cases, a lot of minutia, they're, they're intended to provide for just about any kind of situation, and, and there comes a point where the supervisor has to take his or her responsibility.
But Matt, there's nothing in there that, okay, if you take B, substance impairment, basically somebody could come to work Wycomico County and get three DWIs, three DWIs, still retain their license for work purposes, which they do, and we would still have this individual driving a county car. That's pretty high risk. So, all it says here is they're supposed to report it. There's, there's nothing that says, there's nothing here that says if we have this, it says disciplinary action for failure to report. I guess my, my question is if you have a county employee that has multiple, and it doesn't have to be DWIs, I guess it could be speed DWIs or speeding or...
Sure.
Any traffic violations?
Well, that's, I was suggesting that maybe the addition of a subsection F over pertaining to all these to say that if violation of provisions of this section, I subject an employee to disciplinary action up to and including the dismissal.
This manual also makes reference to several other county policies. There is a vehicle policy, and it may be including that.
Yeah, okay. It could be.
And we haven't been provided those policies yet.
Okay. You haven't been provided this?
We've, we've been provided two or three, but there are several more that we're waiting to receive.
Okay. I'll flip you at everything.
I don't have a, I mean, I have what I remember.
Just to give you an example, Mr. Kramer, under 0823B6, it does now, and there it's talking about internet policies, and it specifically says, "Employees who violate these policies are subject to disciplinary action up to and including discharge."
Yeah.
Very succinct.
Yes.
So that may be your F.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was thinking.
Okay.
Do you want to go back to where we were, or move ahead from, from up to 0817?
Yeah, we left off at 0805.
Is there anything there that, in 06, reflects time, these are, again, these spell out, try to cover everything, there's really, there's really nothing in here that's unusual or outrageous, I don't think. For example, on unauthorized absence, any employee who's absent without permission for three consecutive day, work days is considered to have resigned their position with the county. And if a person is unable to work, that's the C above, I'm on page 34, going backwards. There are certain requirements.
Okay.
Reporting to work, leaving work early, break period, they're all defined.
Yes, sir.
Work at home, 808. I thought we had a policy, I know in the county council, we had a policy that we were not going to let employees work at home. Is that something new in here, this 808?
Well, this, this, this says, "An employee may work from home if their position is conducive to such arrangement, and the department head approves the arrangement in advance."
Yeah.
And what, what you're referring to was just for that particular individual, or maybe to, maybe for the entire council staff.
Is this, is this been here, or is this new?
No, this is not new.
It's new since 2003, yes.
I guess, I guess, you know, I...
One of the reasons, Joe, that, that this was done was because there was a key employee who was pregnant. And because that employee was essential to operations and finance at that time, they were allowed to work from home because it was necessary. There was no one at that time who could do their job. So that's, that was considered, and then going forward, it was decided that that could happen again with a key employee, and that's why that's there, certainly optional, take it out.
I guess we should have told county attorneys about this, whether we need to. I understand the need.
That's what happened, so...
But, but there's a lot of liability there. I mean, you've got people working at home, we don't know the working conditions, you know? Because workers' comp case, you arrive out of, you know, they say they were working when, you know, they slipped on an ice cube in the kitchen. I mean, I think it needs to be better defined than what the responsibilities would be from working at home, instead of just working at home.
That's, that's the reason it was there, but certainly that...
I mean, that is council...
Something to be considered.
A lot, there's, that goes on a lot, I think, more than just...
I think it's like you touched on, it would be a situation if Mr. Taylor could tell us whether the, there's, is that, there's that much liability from, is there that much liability from your experience, Mr. Taylor, as to, or Mr. Baker, you're here, I'm getting...
I'm probably not the right person to ask, but I, I can see the concern, I can see the ground for the concern.
Mr. Baker?
It may not be the ice cube on the kitchen floor, but there could be other aspects of it.
Oh, I don't know that there's that much increase, but you are right, there are, there's probably somewhat of an increase, especially what Mr. Holloway was bringing up. It probably wouldn't be an ice cube, but if they picked up a laptop and twisted, or if they were bouncing it on their lap, you know, there could be some items. You could probably clarify that with workers' compensation commission, make sure that they're still covered under your insurance.
I mean, there's also the case, you know, maybe a spouse has an issue with something that happens, you know? I guess being more defined, could it, could it be put in here that if they are working from home, you know, it releases us a liability of some of those cases, you know, say workers' comp cases and stuff like that? Because we have no control over what's...
That's a wide, that's a whole wide open area that we'd have to take a look at, maybe it was Mr. Taylor's hand.
I think another, you know, I think another possibility might be privacy, too, of some of the things they're working on, because if they're working back and forth, I'm sorry, if they're working back and forth over the internet, particularly if they're hooked into the county system, you know, that just raises an issue, I mean, there's a concern.
I realize the need, and I think it's, you know, justified to do this, but I think it needs to be nailed down a little bit more, the responsibility is our...
You've pointed out that it's, it's a, it's a rarely used practice in this workplace, this particular workplace. It seems ebb and flow, but growing, becoming a growing practice in certain segments of the private sector. And this might be the time to flesh something out more, if you think that the incidence of working from home is likely to increase.
Well, even more than, I mean, what Mr. Taylor said, I think, is probably more important than liability, and that is, who's going to work at home and not use the internet? And that could compromise the county system, so...
I think you can check with Mr. Michichi, it's, the way the county has gone to the cloud system, I think he feels that...
Could be okay, yeah.
It's been fastened down for that type of...
When, when I was recuperating from my knee surgery, IT gave me access to, what is it called?
Virtue?
Call BP, yeah.
Our virtual private network.
Yeah, okay.
And I, I, if, if I was on the worker, if I was on the virtual private network, I could have been in Hong Kong, and it would have been exactly as if I was at my desk.
Okay, well, it sounds to me like it's an administrative responsibility. To see exactly whether or not this needs to be in or out of this one section here, based on total management function.
Yeah, that's why it was put in, but, but his points are well taken for, for risk, liability, exposure.
But my concern was, to some extent, who might also be at your desk? In other words, the, the internet connection itself might be secure, but at the, at one end, it might not be secure, just on a general basis, that's...
Might be easier to remove it than to define it.
No, but I see the need of working at home situation. I mean, at some point, I don't think it's a practice that we should do at the time.
Encourage.
Encourage, but I think it can be better defined.
Going back to your prior question, 0837 on page 45, makes any violation of the work rules subject to discipline up to discharge.
I knew it would be somewhere.
Yeah, it took me a few minutes to find it.
And that does raise a question, I mean, if it's going to be a Personnel Manual, if you're going to read, they shouldn't have, they shouldn't have to search to find some things, even if you're being repetitive. They shouldn't have to go down 0835 and verify something else in there.
Yes.
There are some areas where we've noticed that, John. There are some other areas where we've noticed that we've made...
Okay, that's a lot to do.
On page, moving on to page 34, after, after 0808, I call you or two, we've been, we were talking about working, working hours, overtime, compensatory time. There is a section 0815, which I did not realize is in here, but it states that volunteer work for county. County employees may not perform volunteer services for the county for the same type they are regularly employed to perform. It's a good thing I'm retired.
That's fair, I understand.
Yeah. Any, anything, anything else call your attention in, in this area? We added on page, and I need, I need help because I can't read my own notes. Page 35, Sharon and everyone, 0816, we were recommending an addition of subsection H, and it, and my note says for department heads, and I can't read it, I can't read my writing after that. Well, I think that was a note to myself that would jog my memory, and it didn't.
I think the question was secondary employment. This section pertains to the employee, and the question was whether a department head should be allowed to engage in secondary employment as well.
That's it, that's, that's it, thank you. This 0816, secondary employment section was a conundrum, because it, we talked about a second job as a, as a county employee in another capacity. We talked about that earlier. This section, secondary employment, means another job, not working for the county. Secondary, well, secondary employment is not allowed when it may present a conflict of interest or interfere with an employee's ability to perform their assigned duties as an employee. Must notify the department head prior to accepting secondary employment. Secondary employment may be subject to the ethics law. And then it provides, secondary employment is not at all uncommon for members of the sheriff's office, you know, they provide security and other services for municipalities and for service clubs and the schools and so forth. But for, I would say, most county employees, secondary employment would be unusual, and especially if it took place during the workday, unless the employee was on...
Shift work.
Shift work, well, yeah, shift work or, or leave. If an employee was on leave time, it'd be a different matter, but to undertake a second job during the work, regularly worked scheduled time, not on leave, would be a clear violation.
So, number C, there's the county uniforms. Employees shall not wear county uniforms to work at a secondary job site. Does that pertain to the sheriff's office as well?
No, doesn't.
They have a separate?
In many cases, a deputy sheriff would not be very effective if he was not in uniform.
Well, I understand that.
Yeah.
That's the point you're making.
If you look at paragraph B right before that, secondary employment would be as mandated by the sheriff's office policy, and I believe that's in the sheriff's office policy that they are...
Okay. When I read that, I was just thinking that it meant approval for the job, and not anything to do with the uniforms that they wear.
No, I think it has a whole series of regulations on that.
The whole thing's kind of vague. Okay. Any questions from anybody at this point?
Clarifying what I couldn't read before, on, on page 35, that suggestion for a subsection H, under secondary employment, that county department heads would not be allowed to have secondary employment during normal county work hours unless the employee is on accumulated leave.
Okay, okay. I was worrying about on page 38.
Okay.
"To ensure that the use of electronic and telephone communication systems and business equipment is consistent with the county's legitimate business interests, authorized representatives of the county may monitor the use of such equipment in the executive branch of government from time to time. This includes monitoring internet usage of any kind. This may also include listening to stored voicemail messages." I think there needs to be something in there, and there is some, in another section of this, there is a separation between executive and legislative branch?
Yes.
I think it should be, that same exemption, or whatever you want to call it, should be noted in that section as well. Because you have to, you have to guarantee, guarantee a separation of legislative and executive branch government.
I understand what you're saying, and this even, as it's worded, partially recognizes it, because it says in the executive branch of government from time to time. It, that almost...
That's, to me, says that the executive branch...
By exclusions, that's what I mean.
That just allows the executive branch to look at all the emails.
For, in the executive branch.
In the entire county.
Then you think, do you think that there needs to be clarification there, a limitation?
Sure, yeah. Who are authorized representatives of the county? And if it says here that authorized representatives of the county may monitor the use of such equipment in the executive branch of government, who the heck in the county is an authorized representative that doesn't work for the executive branch that can go in and monitor that, their email? They work for them.
What, what direction do you think that section should go?
I'm surprised that it pointed out specifically that they, I under, I guess that what they're trying to say is it, it should, accountability needs to be held at all levels, but I thought it was rather vague to just say authorized representatives, and I, this time, don't have a recommendation or suggestion. So I think that's a very weak section there, in, in two aspects.
Is there anything in there about social media?
Let's...
I think that's in a separate policy we have...
Well, I was just looking at telephone calls, receiving telephone calls, and I was thinking like people tweeting all day long.
Yes, yes, that, that wasn't, I don't think there's any reference in here at all to tweeting or social media.
It is a common practice that, even in business, that management can certainly go through, if you're, if you're working at your desk and you're on your computer, you're subject to whatever they want to see. And, and I know that companies actually can do that, and they do do that. They can monitor every, every letter that you type on your computer.
Keystroke.
And it's every keystroke, so, and that's, I can appreciate that. I just think that there needs to be a separation with this, as far as, to a certain degree, between how it works with the executive and the legislative branch. And this authorized representatives, being able to monitor the executive branch, doesn't sound to me like a real solution.
I've made a note to come back to this for, for rewording, both with regard to the legislative branch and who is the authorized county representative.
Okay.
That person would still work for the executive branch.
Unless there's some, you know, you know how we tried to figure out the hotline, who would go, who would be addressed to handle the hotline, you know, you have to find that third party. Mr. Roser's about the only one that might fall into that qualification. Would that not be correct, as the internal auditor for the county?
The charter gives the...
It would be incorrect.
The charter gives the internal auditor access to virtually all county records.
Yeah, and that may be the, that may be the solution to it.
I'd, I'd want to read that charter language again to see whether or not it goes that far.
And this would have to be done in concert with everybody, the executive branch, with this Roser, with the council, because that's, that's no small...
Yeah.
...challenge.
On, on page 38, after other electronic communications and information systems, you see under six on page 86, "As a condition of employment and continued employment, employees are required to adhere to the email policies, internet usage policy, and software policy." As I said earlier, we tend to, or would recommend that you include all of those policies as individual appendices to this document. That serves two purposes. One purpose is that it, it places all of those policies in one place, so that somebody can see what they're buying into. And the second is that, once this is adopted by legislation, the changing or modification, addition or subtraction of any of those policies would be, would have to be done by legislation.
Yeah.
That's, that's where you're...
Solicitation, distribution, comment that I made was, these were only definitions, and I guess that was their intent, only for definitions? No guidelines, no policies, just definitions? You define solicitation...
Paragraph B prohibited.
Solicitations are prohibited. Now, the, the, the issue that we saw that is a question in, in this reference to solicitation comes on page 39, and...
I must, yeah, I don't know what else.
I think Mr. Matt Holloway brought this up the last session, and that was, under, under subsection B on page 39, solicitation for county property, on county property prohibited, there is a parenthesis in four. Wycomico County may grant exceptions to this section under its discretion pursuant to Resolution 345 as amended from time to time. This section 345 gives that obligation to the Director of Administration to approve, to, to approve whether or not a solicitation might be exempted.
Can we include that resolution as an addendum to this?
We have that.
But then if we, if we change the resolution, then we have to change the legislative bill.
Well, here's, here's the way we're looking at it, and I think that's... Uh, and, and I think that's, I'm not going to try to speak for him, he's more than capable to speak for himself, but we were thinking of deleting altogether, uh, the, uh, the discretion to, uh, not prohibit a particular type of solicitation. If solicitations are not allowed, they're not allowed.
I don't know what resolution three forty-five is. Do you have it?
I did not bring it in here with me.
We can, we can follow up.
It was, it was, um, resolution was entered into a long time ago, um, dealing with the criteria, back in that timeframe, there was a very, the payroll system was very limited, um, and the number of items that you could put on it to deduct. And, of course, United Way is one of the parties. So that resolution set out certain qualifications for a nonprofit, and if you met those qualifications, um, you could be exempted from the no solicitation policy.
We don't have that kind of limitation now. Uh, but if, if the county were to get into the business of exempting from our prohibition, uh, certain nonprofits or certain fundraising purposes, uh, every, every conceivable, uh, entity is going to be beneficial to somebody. And so, uh, sooner or later, a, an entity would make the request of the county to be able to offer a solicitation to county employees, and it would be something so egregious to almost anybody.
Mm-hmm.
But if, if the county had created exemptions to other groups-
Right.
-what would be your defense against allowing such group?
Uh, don't we do food drives now and flu shots now and, uh, food banks?
Flu shots are solicitations?
Aren't they solicitations?
No, that's a benefit being offered to employees, at least-
Food banks are?
Oh, no, the flu shots, you said.
Yeah, but it's still a solicitation, isn't it?
Well, they had bake sales down in the lobby.
Bake sales?
Which is really kind of cool because they're raising money.
Yeah?
Oh, yeah, those are definitely solicitation. I just questioned the flu shot.
Well, you know, one out of three then, huh? Or one out of two. Uh, but, you know, of course, you know, one of them might be an exemption, but there are also benefits. There are employee benefits, there are employee initiate, initiatives. So you stifle these issues?
Unless there's criteria. Well, you don't stifle, if you stifle-
Solicitation policy.
If you don't stifle them, then you're going to have to allow everything unless you're doing it under some set of, uh, guidelines.
We, we definitely need to come back to that, I think, and, and take a look at resolution three forty-five. I know what you're saying, Mr. Kramer, I know exactly what you're saying.
Thank you.
Yeah, it-
Yeah, I understand.
Bite you.
I understand, but I don't like it.
Well, uh, never mind.
Okay. Yeah, we, we definitely want to revisit that and like, take a look at three forty-five. So maybe at the end of the whole process, we'll come back with any unanswered questions and address that.
If you wish.
Thanks.
Uh, there's room for concern or at least discussion on page forty-one.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, regard, with regard to searches. And oh eight three two, searches, subsection A, "While the county provides offices, desks, lockers, file cabinets, and similar items to its employees in order to facilitate the performance of their work for the county, these items remain the sole property of the county. The county reserves the right to open and inspect offices, desks, lockers, file cabinets, other storage areas, and reserves the right to inspect their contents."
Should it mention, uh, searching county vehicles?
I would think so.
I didn't see that in there.
I don't see that either.
Yeah, that's a-
The other thing is we provide uniforms to some people. Does that mean that they, the fact that we provide uniforms, that we search the person? I mean, we provide uniforms for, for them to work. I mean, I'm not advocating that, I'm just asking if that could be read into this.
Uh, I'm not sure I'm qualified to answer that question, other than to offer an opinion, and that might not be appropriate.
What does it mean in C, "The provision of, of sections eight thirty-two shall be applicable to the legislative branch at the sole discretion of the county council?"
This was written when, uh, before you made some adjectives to the, um, county personnel or HR policies with some oversight by council. That's why. This was done solely because of the executive branch.
The provision shall be applicable to the legislative branch, that's us-
Section eight thirty-two.
At the sole discretion of us. So you're saying we have to permit in order for there to be anything-
No, that a search can't take place-
Without our approval.
Except, without, without the council as a body.
Mm-hmm.
Now, you're, I, I think, I think we look at this, generally speaking, as to whether an employee might be keeping, uh, something of, that might be considered contraband or, uh, illegal or whatever. That's, that's, that's what we usually think of in something like this. But, but a, a search of county council files and records, uh, which may or may not be public, by a designated representative of the executive branch.
See, that's also, I mean, and then vice versa. That's, that's, this is another one of those problems where I think there has to be oversight on everybody, but how are we going to do that? I mean, I think that, you know, the county council, um, is just as, you know, much subject to this as any employees might be, and the executive branch is subject to this just as any employees might be. So who does it, how, and where's the oversight?
And you also supervise your staff. The county executive doesn't supervise this staff. So if you wanted your staff to be, this to be applicable to your staff, you would have to authorize that, and that's what this gives you, the discretion to do.
What about individual council members? Because we're employees as well.
That would be up to you.
Unless, unless elected officials are exempt from it. Because we are the most trustworthy on the planet.
See, every once in a while, I want to get, something comes up that's a little bit more interesting.
Yeah.
This is one we have to revisit, okay?
Okay.
Yeah.
Going back to A, um, I guess what bothers me about that, and I understand the reason for it, is the people doing the search probably aren't trained to do what they're doing. In other words, there's a, so there's suspicion there, maybe. So they go into somebody's desk or locker or file cabinet, and they find something that they're not, you know, possibly is illegal or whatever, so, you know, they let somebody go. And this person comes back and says, "Well, this person wasn't trained in how to do searches and seizures and so..." So I was wondering, would it be better to, to put in there that, when this is done, that there would be an appropriate law enforcement agency present?
Well, I was, uh, I didn't quite know where you were going, but I was going to call your attention to the only, well, that's not the only, but one of very few, uh, such situations that are within my experience, and some of you were here then, uh, when, uh, an employee was dismissed for cause summarily. And when that employee, uh, was notified by a letter from the, addressed by the, or written by the county council president, uh, that employee, uh, the sheriff's office was notified, and, uh, detectives from the sheriff's office came over and actually conducted the removal and the search of that employee's, uh, things.
Mr. Kramer, can you speak into your mic?
Speaking to your mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, I, I think-
So that's along the lines of what you're saying.
Yeah, I think maybe there should be something, um, interjected in here to bring that, that there would be somebody, um, with experience in search and seizure laws that would be-
Let's, let's work on language.
A county, a county department head or something might not have that experience.
Well, but as you said, a department head may or may not have any experience.
And it happens so infrequently, it would probably also be, it doesn't happen very often, so.
Well, that's a good thing.
Yeah, that's right, that's a good thing.
Revisit that, too.
Uh, to Mr. Dodd's point, when, uh, he mentioned the county vehicles, again, that's a, that's an instance where there's a, a myriad of other policies that are embedded in here, so that vehicle policy would also have to be updated to include your comment.
I had a questions on eight thirty-three harassment. I don't know if I'm skipping down too far, I don't want to get ahead of you guys.
No, that's where I was going next.
Oh, good. I'm thinking right down the same line. Um, and I guess it comes down to that same question, under, um, under eight thirty-three, um, D, investig, investigations on page forty-three, forty-four with a PDF.
Mm-hmm.
Upon receiving a complaint, the Department of Human Resources shall conduct a prompt and thorough investigation allegations. So you have to understand is that, um, uh, I don't know if there should be a third party involved in that or not. Um, I, I don't think any department head should be addressed with harassment. I think it should be some type of, whether it's a grievance committee or something to that effect. I think a lot of times, um, employees are concerned about going to, one, one individual department head or another to file a complaint, or they may be afraid of retaliation. Um, I would never suggest it, but it, you know, what if the fact that the investigation, what if the complaint were actually with the Department of Human Resources? Where would that employee go? Because the manual says go to the Department of Human Resources. So where, where does it go?
Later, it says that the Director of Administration shall attend the grievance when, when there is a grievance, so that would be the, the other person. But, um, certainly an outside person could be appointed from the county attorney because that person is there on the law.
Yeah, because you're leaving up to the Director of Human Resources to, to initiate the investigation. And I would say that whether it was, whether it's the Director of Human Resources, or whether it was Recreation Parks, or any other department head, I, I don't think it works to, to have a grievance be directed to a department head. I think there needs, again, to be a third party, an outside source that you can go to, whether it's a grievance committee or some type, something like that.
Okay, if you're speaking only to the sexual harassment, um, that's one thing, but if, if we're going to go to the grievance section-
Uh-huh.
Um, you could probably address it there because that's a, that's a broader view.
Well, um, we could, we could, but right now it says in, at this particular, in this particular section, that this is the department that's supposed to, uh, investigate an allegation. I think there needs to be some qualifier there in case that, I hate to keep saying it, but in case that specific, uh, department is-
Mm-hmm.
-subject to this, uh, investigation.
All right. The reason that it's there is because it was taken outside of the department and taken to another place which the employee should be able to go to-
Right. But if next, if next week, if next week the problem is in human resources, what, what recourse does that employee have?
Right. I'm not sure where else you would report it other than on a hotline.
Yeah, I was just getting ready to say the hotline.
That's, and when-
And that should be included in-
When this particular language, we, I don't, when this particular language was written, the hotline didn't exist in here.
Yeah. See what's happening here, is I'm giving you complaints without recommendations, right?
Yeah.
Thanks.
And I think adding the hotline in there might be one, one avenue.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, I mean, you could take ninety percent of the issues you could possibly take to the Human Resources Department, and then, as Joe says, at least put another note in here that another avenue for, um, recourse would be the hotline.
Well, uh, in eight twenty, the disclosure of illegal or improper acts, that's the, the note we actually had on that. Since the revision, the county has adopted a hotline process, and it should be added.
Mm-hmm.
And that would be considered an improper act.
Mm-hmm. Mr. Kramer, you had said you were going down to that section, was there any-
Before we leave that-
No.
Uh, the hotline, again, um, the division of the people who are on the hotline-
Mm-hmm.
-because there is a, uh, the hotline has to go someplace. So if, for instance, you say if it's in one department and the hotline complaint goes to that department-
Well, it would, it would not. Uh, what is the, there's if, if a hotline complaint, uh, is relative to a member of the team that receives the complaints, there's a provision to, to avoid that, and can you say what it is?
There is. Normally fraud-type complaints go to the internal auditor, and, uh, HR-type complaints go to the HR director. If that particular person is mentioned in the complaint, then it's escalated to someone else, usually the county attorney.
Okay.
I believe it.
I will take care of it.
Mr. Kramer, you were, you were suggesting that you did want to review that section. Was there something you wanted to add also?
Uh, no, no, it's, uh-
Okay.
That's, uh, that's all I have for chapter eight.
Um, Mr. President, may I suggest that we stop with, uh, chapter eight? We have a closed session, and I know some employees are, have been sitting here for a while, so.
Is that be okay with?
That's perfectly all right.
Is it okay with council?
Yeah, it was fine.
All right.
I don't know when-
There's no, it's no offense to Mr. Kramer and-
Of course not.
It's a lot of territory. That's a lot of territory.
No, of course not. The only thing I, before we're dismissed, I would like to offer for your consideration that whenever the next time we're going to get together, uh, we pick up on chapter nine and, uh, go through, uh, chapter twelve. Take nine to twelve, it's getting a little bit-
Are you sure? This took a long time. You really think, I mean, it, it may be an easy read to cover four chapters, but it may not be an easy discussion.
Uh, then, well, nine to, nine and-
Ten.
Nine and ten?
Nine to eleven. I wouldn't go from nine to- I wouldn't do more than three.
Okay.
From what I've seen, I wouldn't do more than three at three and nine.
All right. That's, okay.
Nine to, nine to.
Well, we've done ninety percent. You know, you might be right, Mr. Kramer, we've done nine already.
Well, we're, we're, we're getting into some testy areas.
We are?
Yes.
Okay.
I was gonna, my suggestion was going to be take, uh, ten to thirteen, but we're going, that was only three chapters, but of course, now we're going to start with nines, that's why I said nine to twelve, only three. But, uh, nine and ten is fine.
And that was actually-
We'll be prepared to go further if you have an appetite for it.
We'll, we'll, yeah.
We'll, we'll rely on Mrs. Hurley.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, but we definitely have to finish off, we have to finish off with nine where we left off.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Excellent work.
Very good. All right.
Unless you guys wanted to sit through another chapter.
You know, you've really got to ruin my back there.
Entertained motion to adjourn so we can go and close the work session. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Thank you.